Welcome to the April 11, 2023 Ashkosh Common Council Meeting. Please call the roll. Mic check. Moogarauer?
Here.
Hansen?
Here.
Miller? Wojkowski? Erickson?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Paul Mary?
Here.
Five present. All right, and Deputy Mayor Moogarauer will lead us in the invocation, and then we will have students lead us in the pledge.
We ask for guidance tonight as we begin this meeting. May all those who participate in our discussions and our decisions reflect the values that we cherish in this great city.
If my students, if my students come up first. Right, you have Madeline Ward of Ameline Hook, Grayson Oldings Dorfow of Ameline Hook, Evelyn Marks of Oaklawn Elementary. Is that better? There we go. Evelyn Marks of Oaklawn Elementary, and Victoria Schaefer, also of Oaklawn Elementary. Go ahead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, thank you so much for joining us this evening. Victoria. There you are. Madeline. Love those earrings. Grayson. There you are. And Evelyn. Thank you so much. Have a great evening. All right, before we move on to our public hearing this evening, I just want to give a few comments. Thank you all for coming this evening. And if you are speaking on an agenda item, there are two agenda items regarding the Lake Butamar item, and that is, one is called the General Development Plan, and the other one is the Specific Implementation Plan. So if you're making comments about the general plan, that's the first on the list. But if you have more specific items regarding the specific implementation plan, I may say, hold that for the next item, just so you're aware. We do have a five-minute time limit, and we will likely recess after two hours. We do adhere to that five minutes strictly. So we've got a time rip here, but thank you again. We'll be with you shortly. So the first item we have is Public Hearing 23-158. Approve Amendment to Comprehensive Land Use Plan Maps, changing the land designation of the properties located along the southern intersection of North Kohler Street and Oshkosh Avenue from light-density residential to neighborhood commercial. Plan Commission recommends approval. And do we have anyone registered?
We do not.
All right, back to council.
So moved.
No. First reading? It's a first reading, and it's a public hearing. You need to call it three times.
Yes, this is a first reading.
Not noted.
Resolution 23-158. Approve Amendment to Comprehensive Land Use Plan Maps, changing land designation of the properties located along the southern intersection of North Kohler Street and Oshkosh Avenue from light-density residential to neighborhood commercial. Plan Commission recommends approval. And the third and final reading. Approve Amendment to Comprehensive Land Use Maps, changing the land designation of the properties located along the southern intersection of North Kohler Street and Oshkosh Avenue from light-density residential to neighborhood commercial. Plan Commission recommends approval. Back to council. We need a motion and a second.
It's a first reading of an ordinance.
This will come back to council at the next meeting. My apologies. We're now at citizens' statements to council, and this is the opportunity for citizens to make comments for items not on the agenda. So not to be confused with specific items on the agenda. Do we have anyone registered for general citizen's statements?
We do. Paul Spangler?
And please come up here to the mic. State your name and address for the record. Welcome. And if you, is there anyone else after Paul?
There is.
Okay. Second person, if you could kind of queue up here, it'd be great, since we have a large-
Patricia Deener.
Patricia. Welcome, Paul. Right there, the mic right there.
Overhead projector, or is it?
Oh.
Just put it up there.
He'll turn it on. Perfect.
Thank you. Paul Spangler, 25, Tony Hearthstone Drive in Oshkosh here. And I've got a issue I had with some driveway damage I had several years ago. I don't know if they can see, it's kind of hard to see on the screen here, but the city had done some plowing, and then they came and cleared the approaches to the driveway. And during the clearing, they had the blade down for the skid steer or whatever. It put a huge gash across the driveway, and it also damaged a couple places. It took a chunk of the concrete out. So I contacted the street supervisor that day, and he said the crew was out there. So they came out the next day or two, and they ground down the damage. So it didn't see the big chunk out anymore. So it went really well. Appreciative of them coming out so fast and responding. But a few years passed, and it started the damage. You can still see the marks on here where the plow blade had gone across the driveway. And you can see some damage starting to take place here where the concrete has been displaced. So I reached out to him. It was one of those things where you don't think about it, you don't call up, you know? And I deal professionally with the street supervisor on occasion. So he called me, and it just happened I mentioned, you know, my driveway had the damage to it and everything. You remember the incident when it happened? So I just, you know, asked him to take a peek at it. And this was in 2020. So three years after it passed, but that was the first suburb that the damage appeared on the driveway. So I explained it to him. And this was in 2020. My area was scheduled for the sidewalk rehab and driveway replacement in 2021. So I figured it would be taken care of in 2021. However, the sidewalk replacement was delayed to 2022. So the damage continued to grow a little bit. And you'd still see the blade across there where it's pretty obvious that it is damaged by the blade. So when 2022 came along, and there was no marks in my driveway indicating that they had identified as an issue. So, you know, you could see here it's about eight inches long. This is one of the chunks that comes out there. So I thought the city inspector would have noticed that when he was doing the inspection, but no marks were made. So I reached out to the street supervisor again and asked him if the city was going to take care of the repair of this replacement. This is because of the damage that was caused by the city, and they admitted fault when they came out and ground out off part of that damage. So he said he was going to contact the paving inspector. Paving inspector called me, and I said, you know, this is damage caused by the city. So he said they would not reimburse. The city engineering department was not responsible for the payment. They would not pay it. I asked him if they would have the streets department pay for it. He said there was no way, mechanism for them to take payment or charge another department, which I thought was pretty odd, that they cannot charge one department to another. I asked him to consult some of the more experienced engineers in the office. I know quite a few people in the office. Called back and again stated that they would not cover the cost of this. So it's a little frustrating. I contacted the street supervisor again, and he said because so much time had passed, they were no longer responsible. And I don't think if somebody damaged the city's street that they could say, too much time had passed, they weren't going to pay it. So I don't think that makes a good answer. So just like to see if the city would, you know, come out and take a peek at this again and see about reimbursing or replacing the driveway approach for the damage caused by the city. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager?
Mr. Robbie's here, and we'll make note and contact Mr. Spangler.
Okay.
We can't take any action here, but thank you.
My name is Patricia Deener. I come to you this evening in regard to, at the last meeting, the public didn't say stuff that I should have said. But I want to make it clear now. When I did Special Olympics, you guys, people, understand what Special Olympics is? Do you know what autistic means? Okay. Well, adults really don't know what it means. Because retard, stuff like that.
Yeah.
It's uncoordinated.
We don't use, yeah. We don't use that language now.
Yes, and it keeps up, keeps up, keeps up. Okay. Now I come to you this evening. Now you guys got audio system, okay? I hear you just added it into planning. I don't know if I just heard it wrong on the TV or what. Because I know through the years I've been in the city inspector's office a lot. They've had audio. They've had it for quite a few years. And I know, because a lot of my friends were contractors. And now you people are going to protect yourself with COVID plastic and have different doors to get in. This started a long time ago. And now you guys are just starting to think safety now? Because I remember coming a lot of times to the city inspectors, and there were people very angry, and a lot of angry. And it's only going to get worse. And I wanted to know why they added it in planning now. Is it because of episodes? And I ain't afraid to say our family, because it ain't just all my family. That steel that I started a long time ago, started way back over on Lake Street that I happened to get into with two neighbors. And guess what? There was a fire department guy had to come home because of neighbors with a fence. So you don't think it's not gotten bad? It is. And I wish they never got in the mess over on Lake Street where I used to live. But I wanted protection, and I wanted privacy in that for my yard when I could enjoy my pool. Now, there's a lot of people not happy with you people. I just talked to a gentleman that lives on New York, seeing if his fence is going to be grandfathered in. Now they're going to rail iron. You know what rail iron is going to do? People are going to get hurt on that, too. And people are not happy with the cyclones being out. Because you know what? Cyclones been in this city for a long time. And I didn't even know about any of this until we came up for a neighbor to have a cyclone fenced out. And if you don't come to the meetings, you don't hear, and I'm so glad to see this area filled up. You guys got to come more and find out what the city is doing. Because if you don't listen and you don't-
Okay, your comments should be directed to council, please.
Well, I'm just letting, I'm happy where you came.
To council, thank you.
And there was one other thing I want to say. Oh, Green Bay's got a problem. We got a problem. We got a problem with yards. And they are disgusting, very disgusting. And if you want, come on in my neighborhood, the whole block of Monroe and Broad and everything. And then you want to take another ride? Go over to Bowen Street. You wonder why we're going to have mice, rats, everything? Because people are keeping their garbage all over. It's all over the yard, food, everything. Tell me what's wrong. The only thing people can do now is like I had to with the gas station, all the health departments. The city got them out of here, put them over on Nagger Street. And you guys got to do something about it. There's too much. The yards are terrible. And then you guys, not all you people, and you guys all complained about my fence. And you know what? Come in my neighborhood and see the junk and everything that's sitting. It makes your heart sick. And I just had my neighbor sell their home. You know what? People are moving out. I had a neighbor behind me moving out.
20 seconds, Patty.
And you know what? It was one of the reasons why. Somebody went to their house, and it was an officer, went to the wrong house and accused them of something. And you know what? That house is going to be rented. And it's getting closer and closer what we're going to do. Because we went up north this weekend, and my friends want us to move.
All right, thank you. Your time's up. Do we have anyone else registered for citizen's statements?
We do not.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to consent agenda items. Do we have anyone registered on consent items?
We do not.
All right, back to council.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can we pull number 13, Resolution 23-166? That's the No-Mo-May.
All right, any other items from consent agenda? All right, we'll call the roll on consent agenda minus item 23-166. Moogarauer?
Aye.
Hansen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six. All right. We'll move then to Resolution 23-166. Designate the month of May 2023 as No-Mo-May. Sustainability Advisory Board recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, the reason I pulled this, Sustainability Advisory Board sent this to us with basically the same thing as last year, full yard, front, back. I know through some discussions, we had a professor, I think Del Toro was here about a month or so ago, spoke to us. And this is still by far one of the top issues that gets the emails and the phone calls flown in terms of neighborhoods and how they look. And there was a suggestion of maybe doing, I think, side yards and backyards only, not front yards, trying to maintain some semblance of nicety in, you know, in some of the neighborhoods and things like that. Sustainability, I think, basically voted against that or suggested against that. And since then as well, that same professor, some of the signs he's used behind this has had to been retracted. I know he's looking to make a statement in Appleton either tonight or tomorrow in regards to it, because they're taking it up as well. So I just wanted to make sure we had a separate vote, a separate discussion. I thought the only way I'd vote for it is if it was just for the side in the backyard. I don't know what other people think, but that's the reason for pulling it out. So thank you.
Other council members? Councilmember Miller?
Because I've got a mouthful of candy, I just want to say I agree with Matt. This is by far the most phone calls I get, both before and after. But I would agree to eliminate the front yards on this. I think this is a good compromise. Thank you.
Councilmember Erickson?
I have some concerns if we eliminate front and just limit to backyards and side yards. That could potentially create some confusion, potentially for lots that might be on a corner. Or I'd worry that that would add in a bit more explanation and nuance that staff would have to explain. So that's my one concern.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, please call the roll. Moogarauer?
No.
Hansen?
Aye.
Miller?
No.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried four. All right. So we will now move on to Pending Ordinance 23-169. Designate the intersection of Bismarck Avenue and Eagle Street as a four-way stop. Traffic and Parking Advisory Board recommends approval. Elementary school, this is at the elementary school on 11th and Minnesota. Do we have anyone registered?
No, we do not.
All right, back to council.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Please call the roll. Moogarauer?
Aye.
Hansen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six. And Ordinance 23-170. Remove small section of 10-minute parking on Algoma Boulevard. Traffic and Parking Advisory Board recommends approval. Is there anyone registered to speak on this one?
There is not.
Back to council.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll. Moogarauer?
Aye.
Hansen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six. All right, we'll move to new ordinances. That's Ordinance 23-171. There will be no action on this item tonight. This will come back to council. 23-171 repeal and recreate Chapter 4, Article 4, pertaining to alcohol beverages and issuance of operators' licenses. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item?
No one is registered.
Okay. City manager or city attorney? Do you want to just give a brief summary on what we're doing with the alcohol and operator's license?
This would allow the clerk's office to issue operators' licenses for all the people who are the fairly routine ones where they meet all the requirements. They could issue the licenses immediately. Right now, we hold them and then bring them through council for a resolution. So it would speed up that process a little bit. If someone was denied through the administrative process, then they would have the ability to appeal through the council. So it will limit the ones that come through that longer council process. And then there's a little bit of cleanup language in the, to update things to meet the current state statutes as well.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, we'll move to new resolutions. 23-172. City sponsorship of the NEW Northeast Wisconsin Dragon Boat Race Festival on September 16, 2023. Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee recommends approval. And I believe Ms. Lee is here and registered to speak on this item.
She is.
Welcome.
Good evening, council. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on this festival that the DEI committee has approved. As you know, as part of the DEI committee's ordinance, we've been tasked with creating a festival or cultural events. And so this product is really the manifestation of what was ordained by the council back in 2020. So can I?
Yes.
I could just give you a quick-
On the projector.
I could give you a quick overview of the festival.
Wait, one second here. We'll give you extra time on this because of technology.
I might be able to do this without the visual. What's that? Oh. So NEW stands for Northeast Wisconsin. And this festival will be held on September 16, which is after students come in and during National Welcoming Week. So it's an outdoor event that will celebrate the diverse communities of Northeast Wisconsin, welcomes newcomers to the region, promotes community-wide social connectedness and belonging, and boosts local economies through conscious curation of traditional dragon boat races, a diverse food fair, cultural arts performances, immersive activities, a global vendor market, and an affinity fair. I'm just going to skip through some of the slides. Some of the secondary and tertiary outcomes as a result of this event is to become a destination event that attracts visitors every year, expand the cultural experiences of community members, creates new connections through affinity groups, achieves identified metrics identified in the DEI plan of the city of Oshkosh, and through this to curate a local directory of diverse participants such as organizations, businesses, and entities to serve as a reference for our community. So why focus on welcoming and belonging? Through the National Civic League, it's shown that when a municipality or community focuses on welcoming and belonging, it reverses population decline and strengthens community resiliency. It attracts and retains talent. And as you know, everyone's talking about attracting and retaining talent from corporations to schools and all different entities. It fosters a greater sense of trust and social cohesion, and it renews energy around public service and the role of new leaders. It's hard to see this slide, but basically, in a 2021 city of Oshkosh survey, on the question of is Oshkosh a welcoming and inclusive community? The response was only 41% positive of Oshkosh, of those surveyed responded yes, as Oshkosh being a welcoming and inclusive community and as a place accepting of diversity. The percentage there was 32%. So as we can see, there's a lot of work to be done in this area of welcoming and belonging. So this festival really just have diverse food, performances. And we purposely scheduled this festival during welcoming week, National Welcoming Week, to make it really intentional to newcomers, students, refugees, other newcomers. Again, we want to make this a destination event. We think there will be some organic social connectedness through the dragon boat formation of teams. And when I mentioned the affinity fair, that's a fair that we foresee as organizations and entities hosting a table or booth and really welcoming and for participants to go around and see what's offered in our community. We'll have some live arts, and I mentioned a global market. And as I mentioned, this connects directly to the DEI committees and duties. We're hoping to have some targets around health, housing, and economic mobility. We're hoping that the city will have some representatives to facilitate input and have an education plan around this festival as well. We do want to implement some equity standards through this festival, such as having compensation for planners and performers, being really intentional about the curation of vendors from traditionally marginalized groups, and having a sliding scale fee for vendors and dragon boat race participants. So for example, a nonprofit dragon boat team would pay less than, let's say, a corporation, corporate team. So we're really calling on all different partners in our community, from the city to schools, local businesses, downtown bid, Oshkosh Chamber, New North, nonprofit organizations, Oshkosh Media, and the Herald, diverse organizations and different corporations. This is where we see different revenue streams from the event from, from unity and community kind of carrying over sponsorships and grants, vendor fees, dragon boat teams, and alcohol sales.
Did we already, did we already reset her time? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll have to ask you to wrap up. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll just take the next minute for questions.
It's exciting.
Thank you. It is exciting.
Yeah, we need to bring this back to council for a motion and a second to get it on discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Discussion. Do council have questions for Ms. Lee? Deputy Mayor?
Don't everybody jump at it at once, come on. So yeah, I do have a couple of questions, and forgive me if mine are boring and procedural. I like the idea. Of course, you know, the DEI's plan and trying to do some sort of community event was something we want. But I have questions regarding the organization of it, the planning of it, the management of it, and the finances of it. So really pointed, so who's managing the event? Who's paying for it? Because there's going to be upfront costs, right? Not so much on the vendor side, but you know, if you're renting boats and things like that. So who's paying upfront costs? If there's profits, where are those going? And then compensation for the planner, so I guess who's managing? Once again, Ken's goes back to who's managing it, who's being compensated for that, for that time.
Okay, so I'll try to answer those. So as far as planning, I'm, I have, I hold the title of the event director as part of the DEI committee, so I would not be compensated as part of the ordinance. But we are partnering with the Northeast Wisconsin Chinese Association, and they're a nonprofit group. They're not registered as a 501(c)(3) yet, but we do have a fiscal sponsor of Colorbold as far as where we're hoping to get our funding through grants and scholarships. So we've started talking with Oshkosh Area Community Foundation and Discover Oshkosh and different organizations who are offering grants. We're also seeking sponsorships for this. I had brought up the option of using the unity and community funds that were from several years ago, and I think that's a little around, or around $5,000. So for that to carry over as it's kind of a similar event. And any revenue generated, we're hoping, not all the revenue, but some of the revenue generated, we're hoping to put back into different organizations, for example, the Veterans Village in Appleton, the, an education fund through OACF, and some other nonprofits.
Thank you for that clarification. Is there a budget document that lays out like the expenses and that, that DEI has or the fiscal sponsor has a budget document?
Yes.
Okay. And then, if I could ask a clarifying question of city manager, we have not held unity and community in three, four years now? Is that right? So is that 5,000 roughly still available?
That trust funds there, the committee didn't recommend using those funds in their recommendation. So that's what, that was the committee's recommendation, that's in the memo. I was going to ask Ms. Lee, is Colorbold a 501(c)(3) because to take donations, there has to be a 501(c)(3), or the city needs to be the fiscal agent for the event. Is Colorbold a 501(c)(3)?
Yes.
Okay, because that'll, if you do solicit donations, it's going to be through Colorbold, not NUKA until NUKA.
Correct.
Becomes a 501(c)(3). And that, that can often take quite a while before you get that. They drag you through a lot of stuff, but you'll need that in order for the funds to be tax exempt for anybody who wants to make a donation.
Correct.
Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. This is more for staff, I guess. I'm all for the event. I just, it's been, what, three years for unity and community? So is that the city's money, or is that, is that sitting in a foundation? Is that?
Yeah, it's city, it's, they are city funds that are held in trust. I believe it's a special revenue account officially. So those funds have been sitting there for probably five years, I would say.
So are we, are we giving this event, are we voting on giving this event those funds?
The committee did not recommend that, so that is not included in the resolution.
Okay.
The resolution, the committee did recommend that the city sponsor it, and what that gives them is the ability to rent a city facility at no cost. They want to hold it at the leach, so that would be something. So the Parks Department is, has reserved that pending council approval, and they'd be covered through the city's insurance if it was done that way. So the issue is making sure that as they go through the special event process, that they're following procedures. That will protect our interests, which is, you know, like any other event. If it was not a city-sponsored event, they'd have to get their own event insurance, and that would cut into, you know, their costs and everything.
Thank you for the clarification.
Regrettably, our council liaison for DEI is not with us this evening. Ms. Lee, or maybe, I don't know, Mr. Fitzpatrick, were you present at the meeting? When, when, city manager, when you say the committee did not recommend that, using those funds, is that because it's kind of been understood that those funds would be available for the event, we just haven't had the opportunity to hold the event? Or is it, did they specifically recommend against that?
Yeah, I was at the meeting, Mr. Fitzpatrick wasn't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And, you know, and Ms. Lee chairs the committee, I believe it was because the funds were going to be outside the cities, the funds for this event were going to be outside the city, and they just decided not to include those funds at this time.
We did not, just to clarify, we did not vote against it? I just think we did not vote for it, is my understanding.
It was removed from the motion. I'm just, that, that specifically funding it was removed from the motion.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, just one last thing and I'll stop. This is only for sponsorship of the event, I want to be very clear on it, I want a record of it. The city's not on the hook for a dime, that this is sponsored, this is paid for by somebody else, that somebody else is funding it, and it sounds like the profits are not going to flow back through into the city's coffers or into even a segregated fund underneath the city to use for future events, that these funds, it's basically being as a private event, but yet DEI is part of this, but that we're not on the hook for a single dime for this thing. That it's just, we're using the city's tax exempt, possibly if they, if it flows through us, but if not, then all they get is our insurance and a free rental of the leach. Am I very clear on that?
That's our understanding, yes.
Because that's all I would be voting yes for. Okay.
You know, this is, sometimes we don't get all our Ts crossed and all the Is dotted, and there's the spirit or the intent, and it's my understanding that those dollars we had set aside specifically for a diversity, unity, and community event, and I don't see why we would continue to hold those funds and not assist with this, because this is two different things. It's the multicultural event that happens to have, if I understand this correctly, a dragon boat race as part of the multicultural aspects of the event, very similar to unity and community.
Yes.
I would like to hear from other council members if they're in support of utilizing some of those funds, maybe not necessarily all of them, to kind of make up for that those years we haven't been able to hold this event. If anybody care to share. Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, I'll take that. I mean, I might suggest that we, you know, vote to approve this tonight and ask that a budget comes back to us and that be considered then, because it's really hard to consider that without.
Right.
Without the budget. That's not, it's not your fault or anything, that's just true. I mean, I wouldn't feel comfortable making a vote either way at this point until I saw a budget.
So are you suggesting we lay it over?
I mean, I have no problem approving what this motion actually says and what came to us from DEI tonight, which gives them, right, sponsorship, proof of concept, which I think would help them, as they're out there raising money, getting a budget together. I have no problem with that, but I think before we commit any type of funds, we need to see a budget.
Okay. Could you know anybody else? All right, please call the roll.
Muggerhour?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. All right, we will move on then to the highlight of the evening I think most folks are here for. Resolution 23-173. Now, again, just want to reiterate, the first item here is approval of the general development plan for multifamily development at the West 3,400 block of Lake Buttermore Drive. Plan Commission recommends approval. And if you happen to have registered under the wrong one out of sequence, it's not a big deal, we'll pull you back in on the specific implementation plan after the fact. And who do we have first?
Kathy Brewer.
Welcome, and if you could, please give your address.
Hi, my name is Kathy Brewer, and I live at 2311 Shore Preserve Drive in the city of Oshkosh. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I have been spearheading a community movement to oppose this development, and I'll tell you why, you'll hear about why, and you have letters in front of you as to why. You're going to hear from a number of individuals tonight on why the GDP and the SIP must not be approved. I sent a letter yesterday, and I updated it today to the common council. There were some key questions last night at the developer meeting that were not answered, and they were simple yes or no questions. Does the developer or any of its representatives have a personal or business relationship with any member of the common council plant commission or any other city employee? That wasn't answered. The developer and the city last night misled the people in response to his question on whether or not the developer had been given any incentives by the city, county, or state. This is proven by the fact that the developer bought the land in August of 2022, and the city decided to bid out the sewer and water in October of 2022, after the developer purchased the property. The city, it, in this, it appears that the city is not upholding its fiduciary duty to the citizens, and the fact that they are misleading the public should concern everyone. You have in front of you with the information that I gave you, Section 30.51 of the Oshkosh zoning ordinance, which I pulled from the Oshkosh website. This NMU zoning district clearly identifies the intent. This property is NMU-zoned. The GDP was, the plan commission failed in its responsibility when it approved this because this NMU zoning district clearly identifies the intent. Residential uses are intended to occur at an approximate density of 10 dwelling units per acre. That means that of the buildable acreage, 20 acres on this land, only 200 dwelling units could be built. The plan commission was inaccurate in its report, and as a result, the GDP should not have been approved. We respectfully request that Agenda Item 20, the GDP, be declined for these reasons or at the very least sent back to the plan commission so that they can reevaluate the zoning ordinance correctly. We also ask this for the reasons of all who will speak here tonight, for the thousand-plus people who have signed the petition opposing this development, but most importantly, because it is inconsistent with 30-51 and 30-387 of the Oshkosh zoning ordinances. In addition, for the last, last night and previously at the plan commission, we were informed that there should have been a neighborhood meeting before the plan commission held their meeting, it was not, and therefore, due process and substantive due process were not followed. Everyone agrees that growth in our.
Excuse me, just one moment. I'm not sure what the green pieces of paper are for.
We're trying to keep order within the room.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to know.
We agree with what's.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Proceed.
All right. Everyone agrees that growth in our communities is a plus, and no person here tonight will disagree with that. But growth needs to be in the right areas to improve the community and not detract from existing residences and native surroundings. Our community will show you tonight that this project is inconsistent. We've shown that through the letter that I sent. It is inconsistent with the zoning ordinances and incompatible with the zoning district, the adjacent residential uses as the NMU zoning ordinance identifies, the land and the neighborhood character. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we could call out like three at a time and have them line up, just to keep things rolling, instead of taking time to hop through, that'd be great.
James Reske, followed by Jody Giacomini, my apologies, and then Cheryl Borgart.
So if those other two could kind of line up behind this gentleman here, that'd be great. And if I could also ask you, if you are repeating any comments that have already been stated, please hold those out of courtesy for others who may want to add or contribute other ideas. Thank you. Please, city chairman, address and welcome.
James Rocheski, 3051 Bellar Lane, town of Oshkosh. Okay, as you know, last evening, there was a presentation by Red Earth Development, followed by question and answer session. Many questions were asked of the three representatives of Red Earth attending this neighborhood meeting. One question was asked if any of them lived near any high-density apartment complexes. They all indicated they do not live near such a development. So then the question was asked to them, would you like to live within a half mile of this proposed development? None of them were willing to answer that question. Interesting. One representative did indicate that if the neighbors were involved in this project from the beginning, several years ago, they would have been able to take all the neighborhood suggestions into consideration in the planning process. Note that leaving the surrounding neighborhood residents out of this process is what led to what you see here. Okay, last week, I sent to every council member a letter, and thank you, Mr. Mugger, Mugger. Thank you, you're the only one that responded, out of all the members here. Recommending you drive out to the city streets of Shore Preserve Drive, Songbird Court, Sandhill Court, and Wood Duck Court, these are all in the city, and then the town streets of Edgewood Lane, Bellar Lane, Sunset Point, and Shangri-La Point Roads, which all surround this project, to see for yourselves what we will be seeing and hearing with this development. I just wonder how many of you did this. Please put yourself in our shoes, within a half mile of this development, and vote with a clear conscience, and follow the codes currently on the books, and then decide if this proposal is compatible with adjacent surrounding residential uses and neighborhood character. Please don't look just at the influx of tax revenue this project will bring in every year, but decide if you would like to live near this development like we will be forced to. This is a beautiful development with many amenities that should be built in Oshkosh, but in a different location than the quiet shores of Lake Buttermore. The neighbors around this proposed project strongly suggest that the council vote against this project and send the developer back to the drawing board to reduce the size to what the building codes were before you changed them for this particular project, which is less than 35 feet in height, no more than four units per building, and 10 units per acre. That's all we're asking. We're not against development. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please step forward and state your address, please.
Jody Giacomini.
Good evening. 3061 Bellar Lane. I'm going to read hopefully quite quickly, because I know that there's a lot of things to discuss tonight. Council members, plan commission members, and city employees have a fiduciary duty to protect the natural resources in the public trust. As elected officials and city employees, the public is putting its trust and confidence in you to act as the public's best interests. The city has indicated on multiple occasions that it should have held a neighborhood meeting prior to the plan commission approval. This admission shows that a lack of procedural and substantive due process was carried out in this project.
Again, if I could ask folks who are repeating something that's already been said, hold those comments and limit to additional information, please.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Your name and address one more time?
Jody Giacomini.
And the address?
3061 Bellar Lane.
Okay, that's not what it was.
It's not, it's.
Okay.
It's not my mailing address, so I don't know if you're asking for that reason.
Okay, it just doesn't match, I just wanted to make sure. Okay. I had the right person.
Going back to the meeting that should have been held, there was one council member that did reply to my letter as well, and I appreciate that. I think you might know who you are without naming names, but it meant a lot to me to hear. The city.
The city should have had a public meeting before Plan Commission, but like you said, I think the proximity to town neighborhoods wasn't adequately considered, and I agree with that. The wetland delineation report provided to the DNR is not representative of the true conditions in the area. The intent of the zoning ordinance is, this district is intended to permit residential development and small-scale commercial uses compatible with adjacent residential uses and neighborhood character. Residential uses are intended to occur at an approximate density of 12 dwelling units per acre. I'm not certain everybody understands that, so, thank you, 10, I'm sorry. We already talked about the height allowances. This is basically the same thing, but it says, "with only the townhouses meeting criteria within the NMU." This development project will have multiple exceptions to zoning district. How is it that building five 60-foot structures, or even the two indicated for Phase 1, are compatible with adjacent residential uses and neighborhood character? We've talked about that in meetings here since planning. Adjacent lands are zoned SR5, other business northwest of this land, and a church. Neighborhoods are all single-family-owned homes. In fact, there's no other multi-apartment buildings of this size within a three-mile radius of the property, and the surrounding neighborhoods are single-home residences and SR5-zoned land. We have some criteria for the approval of 30387. The proposed plan development project design does not detract from areas of natural beauty surrounding the site. The Plan Commission did not even address this clause. It is clear the 60-foot structures, regardless of how nice the developer intends them to be, will detract from areas of natural beauty in this area. Has any member of the common council or city walked or ridden along the Weewash Trail, which was brought up earlier? The goals on the master plan for the Weewash Trail were clear on its intent: to utilize portions of the trail corridor for natural resource management and observation, prairie restoration, endangered species protection, and wetland protection where possible. This development puts that all at risk for thousands of people who enjoy it. The common council has the fiduciary duty to protect our natural resources in the public's trust, and if the council votes to carry the resolution on Agenda Item 20 and 21, we feel they are failing the fiduciary duty. The Plan Commission-
Thirty seconds.
The Plan Commission indicated in its decision that the proposed plan development project will positively contribute to and not detract from the physical appearance and functional arrangement of the development area. The surrounding areas are single-home residents, nature, and wildlife. An apartment complex consisting of five 60-foot buildings that needs to be given BSM from a standard height, unit density and mass units per building, along with setback requirements, does not positively contribute to and absolutely detracts from the physical appearance-
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to finish my sentence, since somebody stopped me.
We're not going to allow extra time tonight. We're sticking to the five minutes. We do have quite a few folks, so, thank you.
May I finish this sentence? Is that fine?
Thank you.
It's one sentence?
One sentence.
I am respectfully asking, yes. It does not positively contribute to, absolutely detracts from, the physical appearance of the nature surrounding, regardless of how much green space the developer indicates that they will add.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for listening. We appreciate it.
Cheryl Borgart, followed by Tammy Gutierrez, and then Susan Eichman.
Welcome.
Yes, your name and address? 2971 Sunset Point Lane, Oshkosh, Wisconsin. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Please reconsider this project. Oshkosh is a destination city. The community that is affected by this goes far beyond just the Oshkosh community. I have spoken with concerned people from other states and even other countries that visit the Oshkosh area every year for the EAA and other venues, such as what she just spoke about earlier. They hope the Oshkosh City Council will consider their fiduciary duty of the city to the citizens and address our concerns. These people come here to enjoy the area for the EAA and other events, the bountiful lake life and fishing, and undisturbed natural areas that are inhabited by a multitude of wildlife. The size and scope does not match or complement this area, and those requirements should have been a consideration by the Planning Commission before they approved it, and must be considered by the city council members before this development is given any kind of approval. Admittedly, City of Oshkosh Planning Services Manager Mark Lyons, who is not an elected official, stated at the March 7 PC meeting that he unilaterally decided not to inform the public with advance notification of the development project plan. Then he offered oops, my bad.
Ma'am, I'm going to ask you not to direct personal attacks on our staff.
I'm not attacking him. He admitted at the meeting that he did that.
Okay, I'm going to ask you not to make direct comments on staff performance.
A factual comment. Then he offered mea culpa during the Planning Commission meeting, the only and the first Planning Commission meeting where this was discussed and approved. How does a non-elected official have the unilateral power to decide what the community does and doesn't need to know? The Planning Commission's actions throughout this project are concerning at a minimum and possibly incompetent. In addition to that, at the developer meeting last night, that same representative indicated incorrectly that an NMU zoning district allows 36 dwelling units per acre. It does not. This has already been covered, so I know you'll yell at me, so I'll skip it. If these zoning codes are ignored for this project, how can you then hold anyone to the zoning code requirements anywhere for anything at any time? You are setting a precedent that should not be set. If you allow this builder to exceed these limits, and then turn around and hold someone else to their limits, you are showing a preference, and you're picking winners and losers. These are not the actions a city council should be making in line with its fiduciary duty of the city to the citizens. As Michael Ford so eloquently said in his Oshkosh Herald article dated 4/5/2023, entitled, "Nonpartisan Local Government Needs a Clearer Path," when someone shares their opinion, listen to it, consider it, and do not dismiss it. When you have a disagreement with a person or an entity, seek compromise and celebrate a successful compromise as a victory. Is it not better for everyone to support an imperfect outcome they can live with, rather than have half the population celebrating absolute victory while the other is embittered against their neighbor? Well, this is us, requesting you to compromise with us, and require this developer to comply with the current zoning codes for this building site. This project must be scaled down to be compatible with the adjacent residential uses and neighborhood character. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Next.
Tammy Gutierrez.
No one gets it right. It's okay.
Thank you, welcome.
It's Gutierrez. That's all right, no problem.
And your address?
Yes, 5718 County Road E. Amro. My mom lives at 3071 Belair, just in case. The Plan Commission indicated in its decision that the proposed plan development project would produce significant benefits in terms of economic, environmental design, and significant alternative approaches to addressing developmental, development performance, and that relate to, and more than compensate for any requested exemptions based standards, modifications, variation of the standard for regular, regulation of this chapter. Providing a BSM for height, density, acres per unit, maximum units per building, along with adjusting setback requirements on sensitive wetlands, will not significant benefits in terms of environmental design, and will only cause negative environmental impact to this native area. What changed from the time the zoning district was put into place to now? The proposed plan development project is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and other planned areas. It is the responsibility of the city to determine such consistency. The Plan Commission indicated in its decision that it would, that it was using the 2021 housing study as a guideline for approval. The 2021 housing study clearly indicated that the proposed residence need, resident needs, 1,700, the largest need, 60%, were going to be single-family, 1,000-plus, and rental units made up of 40% of this need, 680 units. Additionally, the housing study clearly indicated that the largest needs were not in the rural areas of Oshkosh, but in the most populated areas, the downtown and the college. The proposed development did not meet that need. Are you aware that the City of Oshkosh population has actually decreased in the last year since the housing study? Since the housing study, there have been eight projects approved by the City of Oshkosh with a potential of 794 units. In 2021, 185 were approved and still under construction, but only 32 were completed. Why the delay? In 2022, three-phase mixed-use development approval, approved included 295 units with Phase 1 of 109. Construction has not yet begun. Another project is waiting on the state tax credits, 18 units, and in 2023, already two development projects, one approved for 56 units, and one in a planned concept for 20, approval for 208 units. Projects have been approved that will be more, that will more than cover the needs determined for rental in the 2021 study for a 10-year plan. Yet you continue to approve projects on this scale. Why? We shouldn't, why, shouldn't the common council and the Planning Commission instead try to determine how to provide a single, a single-resident home needs identified in the housing study? Why all the major multi-unit projects when they are not warranted or needed? This property was ideal for single-family homes. A single-family home would maintain and the desired relationship between the land use and would not detract from the areas of natural beauty surrounded by the site, and would be complement, and would be compatible and adjacent to nearby development. This project is not consistent with zoning ordinance 30387 and is incompatible with the zoning district and the adjacent residence areas on the land. Conclusion: We respect and request the Agenda Item 20, GDP, and Agenda Item 21, SIP, but decline for all the other reasons indicated by all those who have spoken, but most importantly, because of the inconsistent with 30 to 51 and 30387 in the Oshkosh zoning ordinance, due to the process subjective, I'm sorry, due and due process and substantive due-to process were not followed. Everyone agrees that the growth in our communities is a plus, and no person has, here tonight, will disagree with that. But growth needs to be in the right areas to improve the community and not detract from existing residences, natives, and native surroundings. Our community, I'm sorry, our community has shown that this project is inconsistent with zoning ordinances-
Okay, your time is up. Thank you.
-and incompatible with zoning district and adjacent residential areas.
That's enough, thank you.
I just wanted to finish my sentence.
Susan Eichman, followed by Aramit Anand and Peter Miller.
If you could step forward, please. If your name has been called, please step forward.
I'm Sue Eichman. I live at 2255 Westwind Road, and I'm going to finish this. I don't, the last paragraph is, "If the common council feels a development project and additional housing is needed to fulfill the needs addressed in the 2021 housing study, it should instead regroup with the Planning Services Department to develop a plan to address the 1,000-plus single homes that are needed in the next 10 years versus building additional multi-unit complexes that do not meet the needs." And most of, what I wanted to say has already been said, so I won't go there, but I, I do want to address the traffic concerns. Westwind Road, Sunset Point, and Belair Lane, we are dead ends. Our only access to the outside world is Lake Buttermore Drive. And I can tell you from experience that the roundabout at 45 is, you know, at certain times of the day, like going to work time, coming home, and even certain times of the year, deer hunting is one of them. You can wait on the, like, at the end of Lake Buttermore Drive, trying to get onto 45 for a good five, 10 minutes, and now you're talking about increasing the number of residents out there, doubling, basically, the number of units of houses we already have out there, and it's going to be a nightmare, I think. I do not think the DOT did a really sufficient study on that. And then I just have one more point. I noticed that you just approved your renewal of the Bird City, Wisconsin designation, and this is a designated migratory flyaway where this housing project is going to be built, and to me, that's very incompatible with being a bird city of Wisconsin. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please. If you could state your address, please, for the record.
Hi, folks. I'm-
Welcome.
I'm AJ Anand. I live in Shore Preserve on Sandhill Court. Folks, a lot has been mentioned, and I'll give you a synopsis of my perception as a resident in the community. This project is going to be sandwiched in between two subdivisions. I first learned of this project last month, in March, and I understand the city has been working with the developer for over two years. Given that to be the case, my perception is that cities' processes have not been transparent. As somebody pointed out before me, even if you don't agree, you've got to listen. In a democracy, majority rules. I may end up in the minority. I'll have to accept the majority rule, but you have to listen. As Judge Judy would say, "Put on your listening ears." Cities' non-transparency disappoints me immensely. I'm terribly disappointed. I'll cite Will Rogers, the old Western cowboy, who said, "If you find yourself in a hole, stop digging." And I see the cities' processes in a hole, and you guys need to stop digging. If implemented, this project would degrade the existing communities, both above and below the proposed project. It's not going to be good for all of these home, single-family residences that already exist. My bottom line is, as a citizen, I'd have no objection to development that would be consistent with single-family homes. And I thank you for listening, and good luck.
Thank you. Next, please.
Peter Miller, followed by Kristen Mueller and John Jansen.
I, I live at 2895 Sunset Point Lane, and this guy's a tough act- And this guy is a tough act to follow. But most of the stuff I want to talk about has been said, so I'm not going to sit up here and complain, you know, about everything. They've said it all very well. But when I came here today, there were 12 cars out on the snowmobile trail, and these people are out there all the time walking the trail. I took the grandkids out there the other day, and I said, "Take a look at it now. Another year, it might not be the same, because it's just going to change the whole community." And it's, these aren't compatible with the homes at Baller and Sunset and everywhere out there. Everyone's a single-family home. There's no rentals out there, and it's just going to change everything. So everyone else said pretty much what we had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi there. My name is Kristen Miller, and I live at 3830 Shorebury Court. I want to thank you tonight for serving on our Oshkosh City Council. I know it's a big job, and I'm thankful that you're all here listening to us. As you know, there are many inconsistencies in the planning stages of this development and much opposition of the city residents. We are asking the city council to shift their mindset tonight. As he said, Judge Judy, listening ears, if you put on a different lens tonight, take off your financial lens and put on a lens of if you lived there. If you lived in our neighborhoods, would you want to have a big city within a city behind your yard? Would you, you, you think about that? Walk a mile in our shoes. I know it's much more economical, they'll say, to build upwards. I understand that. We just built a house. We built a ranch. We could have built up because it is less expensive. We understand the economics of that. But please take off the financial lens and walk a mile in our shoes. The city within the city is not compatible to the residential area that we have. We will ask you to, if it goes through, to ask the developer to go back and follow the rules that everybody else has to follow, the 35-foot maximum. They want to double that, 60. That's not just a little, that's a lot. That's a big difference. And having that exemption for one person means you're opening up that for everybody. What makes this project superior and exempt from any other project that you have? Why is this one different? If you pass it, why is it different? Please take off the financial lens and walk a mile in our shoes. We're asking you to follow the rules that you have established, the ordinances that you have established, to protect the neighborhoods here in Oshkosh. Thank you.
Thank you. Who do we have next, please?
John Jansen, followed by Jake Boswell and Matthew Boswell.
John Jansen, 2341 Shore Preserve Drive. The Common Council needs to vote against the approval of the general development plan and the specific implementation plan for Phase One of the Lake Buttermore Drive development. First of all, there was not sufficient notification to the surrounding residents and landowners. Many of us only found out about this proposed development within the last couple of weeks. I recently moved to this neighborhood. I moved to this neighborhood for a reason, because it's a quiet, lake-country setting. It is not a high, highly populated, high-density environment or area. For the amount of money that I, along with my neighbors, pay in property taxes, for many, taxes that are in excess of $10,000 annually, we should not have a multifamily development consisting of 500-plus units and four- and five-story buildings in our backyards that will bring significant increase in traffic and noise. Lake Buttermore Drive is not adequate to support the additional traffic. The roundabout on Algoma Boulevard is already extremely busy at certain times of the day. This road will not adequately support the 4,000-plus additional cars that will utilize this roadway on a daily basis. The current development plan only considers Phase One of the proposed development. What guarantee is there that the developers won't decide to modify future plans, such as Phases Four and Five, to include all four- or five-story buildings and not the proposed two-story buildings that are currently on proposal? The bottom line is, the proposed development is not suitable for this land. This is a 70-acre parcel. That 70 acres consists of 50 acres of wetlands and only, and I say only, 20 acres of buildable land. You're going to put 522 units on 20 acres of land? This property is much more suitable for single-family development or even possibly a small retirement community or an assisted-living type of community, not 522-unit apartment complex with building heights at 60 feet.
Thank you. Next, please.
Jake Boswell.
Yep, Jake Boswell, 1310 West Wisconsin, Sparta. I'm also with Red Earth LLC. Just for clarification, we don't have five stories, and I'm not sure where those traffic numbers came from. Just for clarification, we do not have five stories, and I'm not sure where those traffic numbers came from, from the last gentleman. I received an email yesterday-
Okay. No, we are not going to have comment from the back. Gentlemen is speaking.
I received an email yesterday from a local citizen, Bob Albright, who allowed me to share this today. "Good morning, Jake. I wanted to briefly reach out and introduce myself as a local resident, business owner, and president of a small cycling club, Bago Tracks and Trails, that does all we can to support and improve the Weewash multi-use trail. As the club president, I had a number of requests to review your development and its impact on the trail. I took the time and spoke with the county and city stakeholders. Neither had any major concerns regarding the impact, and the county in particular were pleased with your communication in regards to connecting your development directly to the trail. It is our position at this time to welcome your development and hopefully acquaint more residents with our beautiful multi-use trail system. This system provides your residents with an abundance of opportunity to enjoy the outdoors and connect to the neighboring communities. Our mission is to improve the experience on the trail. The county budget covers resurfacing, maintenance, tree removal, and similar items. The trail, in our opinion, lacks other amenities such as rest facilities, shelters, dogway stations, and bike repair stations. I wanted to take a moment to introduce you to our club, and hopefully, we can count on you to support these types of small projects to continue to improve the trail system for users. Thank you for your time, Bob Albright." The bottom line is, between construction, property management, leasing agents, and maintenance and staff, this project will create hundreds of jobs and much-needed housing. There are a couple dozen people here, at least today, speaking against this development. But what about the hundreds, or five to 10 years from now, thousands of tenants who don't have a voice today? Who is advocating for them? It is the council's fiduciary duty to do what is best for all city of Oshkosh residents, not just the people here tonight. Lastly, I'd like to thank the city staff and council members. We have hired chemists, multiple types of engineers, architects, lawyers, UW Milwaukee, and regionally-known city planners and consultants to get us here today. City staff has been great to work with. They are professionals, just like the professionals we hired. They do this every day, and they went to school for many, many years to do this. I'm asking council to approve city staff and Planning Commission's recommendation to approve the GDP and the SIP. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Matthew Boswell, followed by Jim Erdman and Ashley Hess.
11602 Como, Wisconsin. First off, I'd like to thank the council members and city staff for all your hard work on this. I'd like to thank the city staff and council members and all your hard work on this development. The city staff has been phenomenal. So at last night's neighborhood meeting, there was one concern about the height of the buildings that I wanted to address. There was a comment of, "Well, can't you just reduce the height of your building?" We currently have a proposed four-story building. What's allowed by the zoning is a three-story building. So the closest and nearest residence is about a half-mile to our development, to the 240-unit buildings. If you were to look by sight a half-mile away at a four-story building, it's about that bit. If you were to reduce the height of that building-
I, no.
-it's that bit.
That's enough.
So they're asking us to reduce the height of a building that is that to that. That's how far away the sight of line from this development is, a half-mile away. For those people looking at that half-mile-away project that reduces the height that much, that's a very insignificant difference to them. To us, it's extremely significant. That makes the project potentially not financially viable. Maybe we can't offer certain amenities. Maybe we can't make the project as attractive as it currently is. It's very significant to us. You know, at the end of the day, the city of Oshkosh, not only the city of Oshkosh, the Fox Valley area desperately needs housing. They're lacking thousands and thousands of housing, of this specific type of housing. And we hope to help the city meet those needs. And lastly, for any Star Trek fans, in the words of Spock, "The needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few." Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Jim Erdman, followed by Ashley Hess and Dana Hertel.
My name is Jim Erdman. I reside at 2492 Hickory Lane in the town of Oshkosh, also the town chair for the town of Oshkosh. Been on the board over 20 years. And this is, first, this is not a city-versus-town issue. It's mainly residents out there saying they don't like what's proposed in their backyard, but there's almost as many city residents as there are town residents. And, you know, development's going to occur. This is prime land. We all looked at what we did there many decades ago. It's changing. It's going to get developed. But this proposed development, I'm asking you to defer this here and look at this proposal here, the height and the density. Can we scale it back a little bit? And projects do get, you know, sometimes you want to fast-track them, and then they get set back. We got a project, the city of Oshkosh stopped our project here for a sewer project in Winnebago. We didn't, our engineer didn't get approvals from the city to get sewer and water out at Winnebago, and it got tabled, two years. I'm not suggesting this gets two years, hopefully two weeks it can get resolved, but two years. We did a redesign and now got all the approvals, and we got, again, we already had a signed contract for over a million-dollar project. Now it's 40% higher, two years later. But it's going to happen this year, and I think we got a better project because of the redesign. It's working with the city engineers and everything. It's better. I think this can be better too here, whatever. Let's just scale it back a little bit. This island of Dry Island there is 16 feet above the lake, and do another 60 feet high, it's 75 feet above the wetland right there. It's stark. It's going to be stark. Looking, hey, this is out of place. This is a nature area, 75 feet high. There's many places in the town and the city on the north side that you could put a 60-foot structure, not even that high, and you're going to look over both lakes from there, Buttermore and Winnebago, you know? Maybe this developer or another developer on this site here for this project, just scale it back a little bit, defer it here, work with a developer. He's got to be on board, because legally, he can probably do what he can here, whatever, but work with him. You know, let's see if we can scale this back a little bit, maybe down and in a little bit, and it'd be better for everybody. What if you do out there, it's going to be there a long time, long after I'm gone or whatever, and is it all going to be single-family? No. In that, but, you know, work with this developer on other sites. Maybe the town could work with them on something to get something higher for these views, if that's what they're looking for. Here, they're looking at, you know, they want this view, however, they're in the middle of the view. It changes it for everybody else in that. So let's see if we can defer and work with the developer and address it, come back here. It's not going to take that long or whatever, and see if we can bring it down and in a little bit. Appreciate you guys letting me speak. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Erdman. Can I get your address?
2492 Hickory Lane.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hess. Welcome.
Thanks. I have other things to do tonight, but I decided this is a little more important. I don't even know where to start, so I'm going to, I speak from my heart. You know me.
Address, please.
4815 Plumbers Point Road, Oshkosh. They're laying out all kinds of reasons why it's wrong. I identify as being native. All right, I'm going to start with this. I'm going to lead with it, because this is where I live. I experience this kind of garbage day in, day out, where here's the city of Oshkosh, right? Named after Menominee. I don't know your connection to Menominee Nation. Are any of you descendants, relatives, family? I got to tell you, yes, no? Okay. When I saw you co-opting Menominee language last night on your front slide, telling us that this is the river that runs red, you know, Red Earth, you know? We get that-
Mr. Hess, if I could ask you to direct your comments to council.
All right, council, you just need to turn this down. Figure out another way forward. I'm one that would advocate, you don't develop this at all. I'm looking at a map from 1830. I'm not an archaeologist, but I know enough. On this map, it is definitely cited, there's no Menominee village there, a Menominee site. There's Menominee sites all around, whole chunks. Our archaeologists know this stuff. They play a great game, that when they find stuff and they want to add it to their collection down in Milwaukee, they will hold it and say, "It's too old. We can't identify who it belongs to." I was up at Menominee today. I'm working with them to solve crisis built on trauma, based on trauma. That opioid epidemic is gutting communities. This is the work I engage with trying to counter-trauma. And here I am, we know there's sites that have been archeologically spound, because over developments all around here, everybody knows that. This one particular plot, they've not, like, really surveyed. You can go dig up some shovels, fine, and you're going to find nothing. You dig deeper, you'll find stuff. You're going to find all kinds of stuff. And I was up there, and I talked to the Menominee Nation Tribal Preservation Officer, and his only comments to us were like, "You know what? It's a done deal, just like so many people in the city have already told us. This is a pointless cause. It's already done. Don't even fight. What's the point?" Well, I tell you what the point is. This is sacred ground. It's been identified as such. We all know this. When you start digging, you're going to find things. And that was the only comment he said to me. It's like, "We can't do anything until the contractors unearth stuff." Well, unless I got an army of people that can sit there 24/7, I know this game. It's done everywhere around the country. In our own backyard, here it is, again. Happened over at Oshkosh Corp., same thing, same rationale. Oh, quick archaeological salvage dig. Everybody, we don't know it. We can't age it appropriately. We need to have this fine. Everybody looks the other way. Tribes don't have money to fight this stuff. They're fighting to save their lives and their community members because of the continual traumas that they experience. And you have the right, and it's a shame on you, even using their language for such a project and a place that is historically theirs, it is known, it is ceded territory. They don't have the time, given time, you know, and the resources. They would certainly love to try to put up a fight and resist this. They would love to do this all over the place. It's not possible. So I'm just saying, I've just, I don't know what deal you guys, maybe you bought something you shouldn't have, you know? What, who am I to know?
Again, if you could just direct it back, please.
Okay, all right, council, all right, fine. I get a little upset about this. I take it personally.
Thank you.
Not because I live there, not because I have some privilege. I am privileged, but it's like, man, I'm privileged because I have ancestors that fought. I have grandparents that blood and like sweat, like, I'm living in my family's home, my grandparents' home, my great-grandparents' home. I intend to give it to my family. It's a quality of life that exists because we make it so, we want to keep it that way. It's a quality of life that have been built on forever. Historic preservation, I get the development. I mean, this is something you guys have to think deep about, please. Like, whatever you can do, I don't know what moves you all at any point in time, and I get this is a transitional period for most, to some of you. I thank you for your time. It's not- it's not an easy job, you know, guys do a lot of work, and gals, I'm sorry. But, uh, man, just, just figure out another path. If it goes to single-family, fine, but know that there's gonna be things that are unearthed and found, it's gonna have to be dealt with. Like, this is an issue, and we can look the other way and continue to disregard what is. I'll know it, the people up there know it, the Menominee Nation knows it, and more people know about it. And, you know, it's stuff we have to live with, I get it, but this is not appropriate space on so many levels, and you're hearing these reasons why, and I'm just giving you one more tiny slice of a reason why this is not the right space. That's all I'll say, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Dana Hertel.
My address is W-141 Welsh Road, Winnicottani, and I'm not a resident of this area that is, oh, I, I'm not a resident of the area that is, is being addressed, however, I do have some concerns because of the wetland in the area, and I know it has been pointed out, the small footprint of the area that is not wetland, and I would ask that there be reconsideration about putting this kind of a project so close to a wetland. I didn't prepare anything, but I do have just a few notes that, under the NR code, under water quality standards for wetlands, that, uh, there have to be some special considerations for special areas, and if they're in proximity to or have direct hydrological connection to such designated areas, such as state trails, the Y-Wash Trail is right there, there could be water quality issues that relate to having a, a site like this that could affect that trail, but it also affects Lake Buttermore, it affects all of the, the migratory birds that come through that area, and it could be a real issue to what our natural resources are, we, it could be a real detriment by putting in that kind of a housing project in that type of area. If that housing is needed, potentially look at other areas where this could be built, because it could be real detriment to wetlands. And if you're not aware, wetlands really do serve our communities. I know a lot of people may perceive that wetlands are, are messy, but wildlife needs messy, and we need those areas to help to, um, be able to provide better water quality, and if we have a, a development site in that area, that could affect the water quality, it could affect Lake Buttermore. There are all different types of things that are natural resources related that I think need to be really reviewed better, so that this is something that would not be placed in the site, which could be detrimental to all of the wildlife, which ultimately affects people at the same time. I thank you for listening to my concerns.
Thank you. Do we have some other folks registered?
That is, everyone registered under number 20.
Okay. All right. Thank you all so much for following order, appreciate that. Great, back to council. We have a motion and a second.
So move.
Alright, Councilmember Ford.
Sorry, I was quick on the trigger there. Can you, Kelly, can you explain to us the density question? I know that's being tossed around, and, uh, we, several council members asked about that after last night, and I think that's been misunderstood.
Sure. Yeah, and I, we have, um, our planning manager, Mark Lyons, here too, so we'll kinda go through it together. Um, the, the 10, uh, units per acre figure that has been discussed today is actually the intent of the code, but it is not the actual, um, you know, the development standard that staff needs to follow, that the city did adopt. Using that, um, is actually 1,200 square feet per dwelling unit, so when we do the math with how many parcels or how many, um, units are proposed versus how many, um, actual acreages in the, um, the site, it does come up to, they are allowed to, um, 7.2 acres, or 7.2, right now they have 7.2 units per acre, um, that they have, but if you look at just the developable area, um, that's 26, um, units per acre. And when we do the math, um, just looking what the maximum is, it is 36 units per acre, 'cause you take, um, one acre divided by 1,200 square feet, which is required per unit NMU, and that's 36 units per acre. So, um, the intent, um, and it's approximate, it's not max, um, we have an intent and the start of all of our different districts, um, does say 10, um, but ultimately, the actual standards that we have to follow, um, it does come out to 36. Mark, anything to add on that?
Uh, no, just as Kelly mentioned, you know, there's, there's two different sections within each code. There's the intent section up front that talks, and then there's the density, intensity, and bulk, the actual regulations that we have to follow within the code. That density, intensity, and bulk section is what requires the 1,200 square feet per dwelling unit for a density of 36 units per acre.
Okay. Another question, this came up, and, I mean, I think we can all acknowledge that we should have had a neighborhood meeting prior to plan commission, I would, that would've helped everyone, but there was no legal requirement, correct? I wanna make sure that's in the record.
Correct, there is no legal requirement to hold a neighborhood meeting, uh, is at the discretion of the city.
Correct, and I know that's a mistake that won't be repeated again, but I, I think that's important to, to point out, and again, to the audience, I'm not saying just because it's not legally required doesn't mean we should've done it, we should've done it, um, but that's important.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, so, given your math, in, in the second sort of parameters, what, how many units could they build on this, on this parcel if, if they chose to?
I'd have to redo the math, it was like 2,130 or something like that when I ran the math. If you did the perfect, you know, 1,200 over 72 and 1/2 acres, it's like 2,100 and some units.
Just, just on the, just on the 20-acre.
On the 20 acres.
Is it, Kelly can do the math quicker than I can.
I'll grab my phone and do it quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
Did you have any other questions?
720 was the answer to that, correct.
720?
720, okay. And, and how many units are being proposed under this plan?
Well, the GDP is proposing 522 units at this time, but just a reminder, the SIP is the next item.
Gotcha, okay, great, very good. Um, and, and another question I had, wrote, the, the road came up a lot, did anybody reach out to the DOT and see what, what this road was designed for, daily traffic count? Somebody threw out a number of 45,000, I wanna make sure that's accurate.
Okay, we did, we worked with our transportation director, Collins, um, and, um, of course, Department of Public Works also. We looked at, um, all of the different access points, and we did reach out to our contacts at DOT, and they did say that when they did develop that interchange and, and did do all that reconstruction, that, um, you know, they do consider the city's comprehensive plan, and they do look at what could be built out there. And at the time of that interchange, when that was construction, um, I believe it was commercial, which is actually a more intense, um, use than what is being proposed today. So, um, they did take a look at the, um, you know, when they were building it to make sure that it could handle the traffic. And also at that time, the school district was even, I think, looking at a school up there off of Ref Row 2, so, um, the roundabouts are able to handle, um, I think it was about 40, 45,000 cars per day, and, um, you know, sometimes there's a misconception, if you do have to wait, I mean, that's, it, you might have to wait at certain times of the day, but ultimately, the traffic is functioning, it is getting through the area, and safely.
Okay.
Yeah, just as Kelly mentioned there, we did reach out to the DOT, uh, their design standards for the two-lane roundabout, uh, for that is, is an, uh, vehicle traffic up to 45,000 per day. Um, they also commented that, uh, based on their analysis, they are not aware of any deficiencies in that portion of the road network around the roundabout, it is meeting their criteria and their standards they use for evaluation.
Okay. And, and I'm gonna really go back for you guys, and I apologize, I just wanna, just ma- make sure everybody in the room understands the research that you guys have done. And did, did that include when, was a Costco was gonna move out there, is that, or am I going back too far?
Yeah, no, you're going back too far, we have had some, um, other developers that have come forward, um, you know, asked, you know, we worked with them on the site, there were some plans that never went forward, um, but we've always, you know, reached out to, look at the traffic as one area that we always do consider when, um, talking to developers.
So, Mark, and I'm, I'm sorry, I should've sent you guys these questions earlier, but how many, how many vehicles are using the road today?
So the, the recent traffic counts for the area just north of this, which is all we could get off the DOT's information, um, it was like 409, 410 vehicles per day, located, um, more along the Castle Peace area, that's where the data point they had was. To the very southeast, I don't remember the number, I can pull it up here.
Yeah, I'm quick, pointing it up here.
Um, just for a little bit of background, this parcel was annexed into the city in 2000, and at that time, when it was annexed in, it was brought in under a C2 general commercial zoning district, so it was brought in with the intention of commercial development there.
Okay, and so, under, under that commercial development, how high can I build?
I'd have to go back and check the old C2, uh, it was 45-plus feet, whether it was exactly 45 or more, I'd have to verify.
I think, I think we cover that in the SIP, if, if we don't, I know it's been brought up, but if we can try and separate, that'd be good.
Thank you.
Councilmember Erickson.
Um, so thinking about this as a, this is general development plan, so thinking about, from the perspective of, it, does this make sense as land use? Can you talk a little bit about the housing study and, um, kind of where it, uh, if, if it defined where in the city we need especially multifamily housing, um, and, and what type of housing we're looking at?
Yeah, so the housing study identified, uh, within the city that we had a need for housing units of all styles, everything from extremely low and very low-income units, uh, through mid-range affordable up to luxury, high-end executive-style units. Uh, the housing study identifies that there is a squish in our housing market, we have a large number of units, both rental, single-family, uh, within a very small segment of the, the, um, income ranges. And what the housing study says is we need to find ways to un-squish that market, spread out our market, add a diversity of housing styles within the city of, of all income ranges to better kind of match up with the income levels we have in the city. It did not get into specific, you know, um, like catalyst sites or anything, I'm not saying here, here's what you need at this site, it more of identified the trends and the deficiencies in our overall housing market, and gave suggestions and said, you know, there's ways you need to address each of these segments, you need to address single-family homes, you need to address your zoning code through accessory dwelling units and ease of building, you need to look at multifamily diverse housing options. So it really talked about the gamut all the way from very low-end through high-end housing, and the need that we have to address all of them.
I'm not sure if this falls under the GDP question or the SIP, so I get confused myself. Um, gentleman brought up the issue of, uh, potentially indigenous peoples' remains, and it's my understanding that does happen quite a bit in this area. How is that, is that, is that what we're talking about here in the GDP? Because, I mean, is that a, an issue where, um, this would change the nature of this concept if that were to arise?
Um, the, it's somewhat part of the due diligence process, the developer did have UW Milwaukee Cultural Resource Management do a site investigation, um, where they went and did, um, examine the site, do soil borings and, and did, you know, shovel in certain areas, looking, um, for certain, um, you know, if there's artifacts or, you know, anything out there, um, and then they also did do a field report, and they did come back where they did say that, that they didn't find anything, uh, mainly because, um, the area has been farmed for over 100 years where it is going to be built. So largely, it has been disturbed, um, because of the farming, so, um, that's something that, you know, from a planning perspective, we can't control, we can't put that into a, you know, a condition or anything, it is the responsibility of the property owner, if they do find something, that you do have to work with the, the historical society, or, sorry, the Wisconsin, the shiple, um, the Wisconsin Historical Office to address that, and probably work, again, with UW Milwaukee on, um, you know, next steps for that, to, um, to remove them and hopefully, um, you know, work with the different tribes or whoever, you know, the remains might belong to.
The reason I, I ask that is, and I'm sorry I didn't personally call each and every one of you, I, I know I spoke with a handful of you, and, um, there was, uh, one lady who shared that, um, her grandfather had built their place, and there was an actual, um, exchange between, um, when they found some remains with the city public museum and the tribe in order to get permission to continue building, and I'm not sure if, if she's here. Oh, I see, all right. Um, so, so that kind of brought that up for me, and I, and I also wanna say that, um, my family, and, and I'm sure several council members here, used the Y-Wash quite a bit, um, I did drive out there several times amongst many of those streets. I will be supporting this concept, but I, I am concerned about, you know, whether or not, um, we're doing it respectfully and conscientiously. I understand DNR has given their okay on the environmental end, uh, but that does cause me to pause. Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, um, I got you beat, I was biking over there, twice. You got to explore a lot.
He's so competitive, man.
I know, well, I, I kinda felt it was muddy. Uh, trust me, you went to the end. But no, just to clarify, the, the process too, 'cause this came up in one of the comments, if, if, if something is found, the same rules apply if it's single-family residential, multifamily residential, commercial?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so there's no loophole or anything there? Good. Thank you.
Council, uh, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you guys talk just a little bit about, uh, stormwater runoff, water control within the site? We get it, 'cause we, we do this a little bit, right, we hear from you guys, um, but obviously, you know, that, that's a big concern, right? We've got a wetland area, we've got, uh, close proximity to the lake, um, I know they're required to maintain it and control it on their site, but can you talk a little bit about that process and, and how there's, you know, there's safeguards built in, and a little bit?
Sure, absolutely. Uh, Mark and I can take team and we'll pretend to be engineers, maybe James will come up and correct us. Um, so, every development has-
I see him walking this way.
He doesn't trust us, no. Um, every development has a stormwater management plan, and they have to retain the water on site, um, it has to be cleaned, and make sure that it is, um, if there is runoff, it has to be cleaned, um, before it is released back into the city's system, or else if there is repairing rates, um, into the, um, into the water body. So, I stalled enough, I'll let James finish up and kinda give the overview.
Thank you for coming up.
Yeah, excuse me, as a part of the, uh, site plan review process, um, you know, the developers, engineers would have to submit stormwater management plans, uh, through our site plan review committee, and staff from, from engineering division, as well as our consultant that we utilize to review them, would be reviewing it for conformance, not only with our local code, but to ensure that requirements from the DNR are met. There is significant water quality requirements in those codes, uh, as well as, um, you know, anyone who's done development, and the community knows our peak flow control requirements are probably one of the more strict in the region.
Appreciate that, thank you very much.
James, I have one more question, Mayor, if that's okay?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Did I hear you say that our, our standards are higher than the DNR standards in, in our community?
Uh, from a peak flow control standpoint, yes, from a water quality standpoint, we match the DNR's code.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, if there's no other discussion, please call the roll.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Hansen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Gord?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
I'm gonna ask council if they entertain a recess before we start in on the SIP.
Can we ask how many people are registered for the next item?
Yeah, that would be great to know.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 14.
Okay, then, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I think, sure.
Five minutes?
Sure.
All right, back here, 5:20?
4:30.
All right, recess.
Recess.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly.
for Phase 1 of a multifamily development at the west 3,400 block of Lake Buttermore Drive. Plan Commission recommends approval. And who do we have registered? We'll call out the first three if you can come forward.
Kathy Brewer, James Rocheski, Jody Giacomini. I apologize for my pronunciations.
And again, if we could avoid duplicating things that have already been said to save time for folks who have not had an opportunity to express their thoughts. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, Kathy Brewer, 2311 Shore Preserve. I want to address a couple of things that were brought up earlier, and hopefully I can do that. Mr. Lyons mentioned that the NMU zoning ordinance had indicated that they have to follow the requirements. They don't have to follow the requirements because they proved that they don't with the BSM that they are trying to implement for the 60-foot height of the building. Imagine five of the Oshkosh truck buildings in a 20-acre plot. That's what you're going to have here, plus additional buildings. I want you to understand that, because when you enjoy the whitewash trail, and I do, we bike with my grandson out there, we are going to bike with my granddaughter out there, we are no longer going to be able to enjoy the things that we can. And you, as councilmembers, have betrayed the trust of not only the people here, but the over 1,100 people that signed the petition. And one of these developers said they had one person in support of this. You guys have betrayed the trust of the people you represent.
Do you keep your comments to this item on the agenda, please?
It is on the agenda, because the fact that you voted for something--
No, we're not on that item. We're on the next item.
You voted for something that is now going to be a two, now Phase 1--
Address your comments to Resolution 23174, please.
It's Phase 1 of the building that you, the GDP that you just approved is the SIP. Two buildings the size of Oshkosh Truck are going to go in there. Again, you are going to be, understand what's going to happen. You've already approved it. It was clear that you were going to do that, but I want you to understand, and as a citizen who votes and who encouraged a lot of the people last week to vote in a certain direction, some of you may know who you are--
We don't electioneer here either, so if you would--
I'm not electioneering.
Please make your comments to the SIP.
The SIP, there's not a lot we can say. It's, you've shown that it's clear that you are going to vote it through, and it doesn't matter what the citizens say. So unfortunately, once again, you've shown that the citizens' voice doesn't matter.
Next, please.
Jim Rocheski, 3051 Bellar Lane. Congratulations, Red Earth. It went through. But I got some questions.
Direct your comments to the council, please.
Okay. Red Earth did a traffic analysis saying that there's going to be one car every 39 seconds, one vehicle every 39 seconds on Lake Buttermore Drive, over a 24-hour period. Yeah, okay, 1, 2, 3 in the morning. Okay, if you were to use just the peak hours of the morning and the afternoon, there's four peak hours, there's going to be one vehicle every six seconds. Okay, so that was in error before. All right, but I do have some other numbers here. This whole development of the 20 acres, 2,640 feet, which is 65% of the outside circumference of that property, is touching wetlands. The other 1,440 feet, which is about 35%, are dry lands or roads. What I would like to see is not just grass at the end of all your settling ponds, at the end of all the buildings, which has been the proposal there, because grass does, yes, it filters water, the runoff from parking lots and stuff like that, it does filter it. But what I would like to see them is you require them to work with the Fox-Wolfe Watershed Alliance to require all the setbacks along the wetlands to be conservative/habitat strips, okay? What that means is high-quality native plants to protect the water quality and the wildlife. The less mowed grass in these areas, the less runoff and disruption of the surrounding wetlands. Okay, so Fox-Wolfe Watershed Alliance has a great program on building buffer gardens all around any lake, any water that touches, any wetlands, any dry lands. We have a beautiful natural habitat in this immediate area. It needs protecting with all modifications at our disposal. Fox-Wolfe Watershed has worked with several of us along the lakeshore now on types of buffer gardens to build, not just grass. Okay, so that, I think, would be a minimum you could do, since this project has probably going to be proposed. One other thing I wanted to mention, too, is, yeah, the traffic congestion is going to be a lot worse than what they told us, but we get that. So we started, Fox-Wolfe Watershed Alliance, about four years ago identified Sunset Bay as a high-impact area for phosphorus, as well as other runoff and pollutants. And a lot of that comes from that little creek that's right next to this development. So what several of us did, formed a Sunset Bay Lake Association. It's a 501(c)(3). It's been in existence now, this is the third year. And what we're concerned with is the pollution in Sunset Bay, which is one of the worst polluted areas of all of Lake Buttermore. And so whatever we can do to minimize that, I know you go through the DNR, you get the permits, great. I suggest let's go a step beyond. And those buffer gardens are really going to help this. I know a lot of the pollution comes all the way up that little creek, all the way up to Dina, but we can't stop all that, but we can help with this project right here, since it's already been approved anyway, the concept of it. So, anyway, that's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you for the specific items. Who's next?
Jody Giacomini, followed by Cheryl Borgart, and AJ, or Susan Eichman.
3061 Bellar. I hesitate to get up here at all, because I feel like although your eyes are with me, your hearts and your minds aren't. It's evident, even by the 7-0 vote, that this appears to have been already decided in your minds. If not even one of you can think differently about this project, not even one of you can think differently about it, where is that coming from? I think it's not the people who are speaking to you. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. And I think that this is a big mistake for our environment. Hopefully, most of us are alive, and we don't have to endure it.
Do you need me to give my address again?
No.
2971 Sunset Point Lane.
Beg pardon, sorry. I'm sorry, Jessie. Did I just say no and you said yes? I didn't catch that.
Yeah, she said yes.
Okay.
My apologies. So I heard them talk about the traffic study that was done, and the only intersection that I heard them speak about was the roundabout. And there's an entire another intersection that needs to be looked at, and that's the Riff Road and Lake Buttermore Drive. A local business owner, Castle Pierce, attended one of our community meetings, and he stood up and said that that intersection is dangerous now. He has truck drivers that work for his company who go in and out of that intersection, and it is already a dangerous intersection. There's no roundabout there. The turns are, there's no turn signals, there's just yield signs. And everybody is just chaotically going wherever. So somebody needs to do a traffic study that involves that intersection as well, not just the roundabout. Another issue is with the roundabout, I understand that they count cars that go through. Are they counting the speed that the cars are going through that roundabout? Because I can tell you right now that when people get off Highway 41 and go around the upper roundabout and come down 45, they're doing 50 to 60 miles an hour with no slowdown. And if they're in the right-hand lane, they don't even have to hardly swerve. They just go straight through. You try getting out when you've got a packed load of people coming off of 41 to go to work in the morning, and you cannot even merge in because they're coming so fast that it's next to impossible. So if you're just counting cars for this traffic study, you are not doing an adequate study. You need to see what speed these cars are doing. This local business owner, who was at a committee meeting that we had regarding this Phase 1 plan, indicated that he speaks to you guys and the Planning Commission on a regular basis. And he stood up and told us to our faces that there is nothing we can do, nothing we can say, that you guys are going to listen to. And you clearly showed that tonight, that this was going to be voted 7-0.
All right, let's keep the items to the specific implementation plan.
Period. This is this implementation. That's what he was talking about. 7-0, period.
The comments on the vote, the vote is over.
No deterrent from it. And you guys have just proved to us that he was 100% correct. And his interest was how much his land is-- And his interest was how much his land is going to be worth on the other side of the river when this goes in. Thank you very much. Money talks.
Next, please.
Susan Eichman, followed by A.J. Anand and Peter Miller.
I don't have much more to say either, except she's right, it's not just Riff Road, and it's not just the 45 interchange. Westwind Road goes up to Lake Buttermore Drive, it's our only way in and out. And I don't think that has been studied at all. So, and I just want to comment that when I was taking one of the petitions around, I talked to a lot of people in the city of Oshkosh, and every single one of them said, "What the heck do they think they're doing? That does not belong out there." And I think you should know that. It's not just those of us that live out there, it's a lot of people that live in the city. And they also question the need for the housing that you keep saying you need. So, I'm just, I'm just very disappointed, I'm...
Okay, thank you. Next.
Amareet Anand.
Peter Miller.
Okay. Kristen Mueller. Tammy Gutierrez.
Tammy Gutierrez, 5718 Coney Road in Amaro. My mom lives at 3071 Bel Air Lane. Red Earth was here last night, these same gentlemen. The same gentlemen were here last night from Red Earth, and I expressed some concern for them as to the proposal of this site. There are many concerns, but a couple are that a good friend of mine lived out there, and I was on that Thompson farm every day almost for 10 years. We dug all the time, because they constantly found arrowheads and bones all the time. We would dig three feet down, and we'd hit water. We also were just out there helping the gentleman move that's been evicted from the property. The boreholes they dug are within six inches have water in them. It hasn't rained in a long time. Could be, whatever, I don't know. I just think they're getting themselves in over their heads, I don't know. But the other thing that I want to say is, they are going to grade this property, the grading process for this property I'm concerned about also. If you level off that property, where is that extra grade going to go? It's going to be higher than the wetlands around it. There's no, unless you remove soil, it's going to be higher, there's no doubt about that. It's now in an arch. If you grade that arch, forgive me if I'm wrong here, but it's got to go somewhere. And at this point right now, it's meeting the wetlands. I don't know how, what they figure on doing there, that's the other concern I have. I also brought up that I don't think they were aware of two things, that there's a FedEx, a UPS hub just down that same, right off of that, the roundabout. There's also traffic coming in every single day for UWO staff, faculty, and students. It's also a main entrance into Oshkosh, Algoma Street, right into, I mean, I have, I'm going to my mom, taking her to the doctor, we sit there 10 minutes in the morning, just at 7:30. Now, without an extra 500 cars at their own, they already said they're going to have 1.6 cars per unit, that is basically two cars per apartment. If you look at 1,000 vehicles, say half of them go into Oshkosh every day, they're not going to get out of their driveway. They're going to be coming, it might, they might come out of their driveway, but they're going to be arched right over Highway 41 on that bridge. That traffic study, I don't think took this all into consideration. That is a one-lane road going into a two-lane roundabout with FedEx and UPS right down the road. I just don't know if this is going to, this is going to be very, very weird. Also, there is also an issue that the housing study took into consideration that all the prisoners of the prison are residents of Oshkosh. That is true.
Okay, this is not related to the SIP, but thank you.
Yes, because it's flawed. Your housing study is flawed. And the other, one last thing is that your housing study also took into consideration UWO students. They do not need housing that far away, and they are housed at the dorms, most of them, and the rest are around campus. I don't know what you're doing, Lori, what are you, what's the face? What is that face? I mean, you're like, what is your problem?
I think we should keep to the issuer, please. Just, I personally...
I want to know what she's, why she's making the face at me.
Proceed, finish your comments, please.
I'm finished.
Thank you.
Jim Erdman, and then Rick Byer. Jim Erdman?
He's coming.
Oh, okay.
Thanks for letting me speak, and I'm Jim Erdman, 2492 Hickel Lane, Town of Oshkosh, and I'm Chair of the Town of Oshkosh, Town Chairman, was re-elected here shortly before. This project here that we're voting on right now is on Phase One, correct?
Right.
Okay, and Phase One is the, it's going to be...
80 units.
80 units, it can be 60 feet high. I'm asking you folks to, you know, either apply your own guidelines or work, get the developer back here, let's talk to him, defer this tonight, work with the developer, get the height and density down here a little bit. You know, we talked a lot of different issues here. Are there artifacts there? Probably. Is that, can it get around it? Maybe, I don't know. The watershed, the water quality, this watershed, it's Tumblebrook Creek goes up through the Town of Oshkosh, Town of Inland, maybe up into the Town of Nina. Drains a lot of farmland in the Town of Inland. You get a heavy rain, the ditches and creeks run, they run red in that. Till farmers, someday, maybe someday, get adequate buffering, the creek runs red, not just this little 20-acre parcel, thousands and thousands of acres. So, the other issue is all about the housing studies. There's been different ideas on housing studies, some people agree, some people don't. The fact is that housing study doesn't mean anything. This person's not asking for any public money. This is all private money, whether there's a need for any housing at all in Oshkosh.
Mr. Erdman, can you keep your comments to the specific implementation plan, please?
Well, this is the...
Thank you.
About the size of the development and the density. May I ask, can you please pull the, pull the height and the density down, work with the developer, see if you can rein it in a little bit, this parcel's going to get developed, but it just, it's too stark that this 75-foot from the marsh going up, right out of that wetland there, on this 15-foot little mountain island there, is just too tall. Try to bring it down so it's not so out of place in this wildlife area. And please defer it and bring it back here, work with them on it, and see if you can size it down a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Thanks, Jim.
Rick Byer.
Rick Byer, 2101 Abbey Road, on Alaska, Wisconsin. Hi.
Welcome.
Appreciate you having me tonight. Sorry. A couple weeks ago, actually about a month ago by now, but my wife asked me to stop at the grocery store on the way home, pick up some groceries. So I stopped at Festival, and I ran into a woman, Jennifer. Now Jennifer's son, Aiden, used to date my daughter, Gracie, in high school. Jennifer knows me, and she knows what I do for a living. And her first comment to me was, "Rick, they want to build an apartment building at the end of my block. Why do they have to build that apartment building there? Why can't they build it someplace else?" Like, tonight? And again, I'm just running into, grabbed some groceries, I didn't want to get in this conversation, and I just tried to change subjects, I'm like, I don't know. Hey, how's Aiden? Oh, Aiden's good. He got a job last year on the police department.
Can you make the specific, to the specific implementation plan? That's enough.
We can't hear him either.
Oh, you can't?
No.
Yes, sorry. So Aiden got on the police department last summer, and he's doing well. But the only problem that Jennifer had, she said, you know, he's still living at home. He can't find an apartment to rent. And in that moment, I'm like, you can't put those two things together? I get that you don't want it there, but there's a need. We get approached consistently from municipalities across the state. I had somebody call me from Denver, Denver, Iowa, ask us to do a project there. We landed on Oshkosh because we worked with Kelly on the project downtown, and we didn't, we weren't successful on it, but we liked the area. And we ended up in this space tonight because we thought we could bring something that is lacking in this community, a high-end apartment building. You talk about housing problems, the housing is a housing block. You can't get off some of these really nice little homes that would make great homes for starter homes, because the people living in those homes have no place to go, they're not going to move out of their homes unless they have a transition property. And a high-end apartment building might entice one or two of those people to sell their homes and move into that building. That would free up that home for a small starter family or somebody else that wants to get into this community. It's all domino blocks. And until you free up some of those domino blocks, there's going to be stagnant, you can't get off some of these houses. It's a good place to start, you've got a good quality product, and all I'm asking for tonight is if you vote yes for this project, vote yes for the Aiden's of Oshkosh, the young cadet that just started at the Oshkosh Police Department that needs a place, somebody that just, a young professional that just stopped at Oshkosh Corp. that wants a nice place to live, somebody that's an empty nester that wants to sell their home but wants someplace nice to move if they're going to sell their home. And that's what we're offering, we're offering a community experience, and we have...
I'm sorry, can you speak to the specifics on the SIP? I'm sorry to cut you off there, but I've, I got to enforce this with everybody.
I get it. Well, I'll just wrap this up by saying thank you, I appreciate your time. We are here for any questions you may or may not have. Thank you.
Next, please.
I believe I've called everyone, is there anyone that I missed?
Is there anybody who has not spoken on the SIP, the specific implementation plan, that would like to? We don't want to miss anyone. Okay. Back to council for a motion in a second, I'm sorry.
Do it.
Please.
My name's Krista Miller, I'm at 3830 Shorebird Court. Again, I'm sorry. Again, I would just request that if it passed, if our city council would work with the developer and stick to those original zoning guidelines that you had, the 35 feet, again, we understand that you wanted to put elevators in because it's economical, we understand all of that, but it's not compatible. So, a community is a, is a place where people work, live, and play together. They work, play, and live together cooperatively. Please work cooperatively between the developer, our government, and our residents, and try to at least scale it back to a much more compatible development for our city, is what I'm asking you to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Courtney, were you, Councilmember Hanson, were you going to make a...
I can wait till after we have a discussion, but I want to go first for discussion, I don't care if I hit it too early, guys.
Motion, okay, so can we have a second, then?
Second.
All right, discussion, Councilmember Hanson.
I, in good faith, and based on height modification, concern for the wetland and neighbor concerns, cannot approve this project. I love that you guys are bringing multifamily units to the area, but I strongly urge you to work with the community and what they're asking for, to lower it to not the four stories. It does not work for the area. I agree we need the space, and I understand you need to stay within your return on investment. I just, they're very strong on this, and we are here for the city regardless of where everyone else stands, this is how I feel. I want this to happen, I want it to happen on the right terms, though, I hope you guys understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, related to what Councilwoman Hanson just said, can I make an amendment to limit it to three stories as opposed to four?
Thank you.
Other councilmembers?
I need a second, right?
I'll second.
Discussion on the amendment.
Second.
We've got the second, it's on the floor.
Third.
Discussion. Councilmember Ford.
Councilmember Hanson, did you want to address it?
Can I just get a clarification really quick on the amendment? There are two buildings...
Correct.
And both would be limited to three stories.
Correct, the two four-story buildings in Phase One would be limited to three.
And we're just talking about the Phase One, correct, right now? Thank you.
Phase One.
Okay.
So thank you, everybody, for your patience, thank you for sharing many points, some of which I think we saw in some emails, we heard in some phone calls. You know, I'll just mention that my next-door neighbor, I can reach my hands out and touch it, it's like 10 feet next to my house. And is it ideal? Not really. But I do know that a third of our population lives in a mile and a half square downtown. There is not much room to grow there. It is a growing city, we are attracting young people. I mean, we've got some going out and some coming in, but we have to make room at the table, and we have to share. And sometimes that means giving up a few things. But I will say that I do agree with both Councilmembers Hanson and Ford, that perhaps this could be modified to a bit of a lower level so that it's not such an extreme higher number, and so I'll be supporting the amendment. Councilmember Ford.
Well, yeah, just speaking to the amendment specifically, you know, I know the process was rough, I know it started off rough, I'm glad we delayed it a month, because I know, I think all of us needed more information and sort out what, what could be a compromise as opposed to what, something we couldn't, right, just disagreed on the facts, things like the density question. We can't address that. But the one thing that kept coming up that we can address is the height of it, and I think that's reasonable. And I know to the developer, I know that that's hard. I will say that I've been on Plan Commission like five or six years, so I'm used to getting yelled at when I walk around outside. But it's not easy, right? I care more about how we do things than I do any single policy issue. And I know people aren't going to leave this meeting feeling like they were, like they were necessarily listened to because we didn't all get our way. But I hope we can acknowledge that even though the process was flawed, we can leave with a better outcome than we came in with. To the specific questions about whether this was predetermined, I, just for the record, I can't speak for my colleagues, I don't even know who the guy is at Castle Pierce. You don't have to believe us on that, but I can tell you, being on this council for three years, I've never seen that group, this group operate this way.
It makes me sad that someone was speaking for me.
Yeah.
Just to put that out there, it's a disgrace that someone would do that without even asking for our permission or even acknowledging to us that they would be doing so. I hope you guys understand that. They might be talking to some, but not all.
Yeah, I agree with you, Councilwoman Hanson, and I guess that goes something the developer said at Plan Commission, I really, I really hope that we can look back to this in a couple years and realize that maybe some of the concerns, not that they were overblown, because concern's a concern, right? You have a right to be concerned. But I think we can end this with a really nice development, hopefully something that's compatible with the neighborhood to the greatest extent possible. So, I'll shut up, but thank you all for coming, for speaking your mind.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I won't be supporting the amendment for a simple reason is Castle Pierce can go build a 60-foot addition onto their building today. If Costco or whoever the big developer was coming in before, under commercial, they could build a 60-foot building. And just like I don't want anybody to speak on my behalf, I think that a lot of facts didn't come out in this. The DOT did the traffic study on this road originally, so the 45,000 count comes from the DOT. So I don't, I feel it would be punitive to ask the developer to come in and not make make this cost-effective for them. I, I know nobody in this room wants to hear me say that, but I, I want to give you guys the reasons why. If, if, if a church came in there, they, they could build 45 feet high. It just, you know, I see your head shake, but under, under that zoning, it, it is allowed. So, those are my reasons why I will be voting against the amendment tonight. Thank you.
City manager.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it might be appropriate, I, I did ask the potential for that question to come up because it was raised quite a bit last night at the neighborhood meeting, but I think it would be appropriate to, or at least an explanation and then the impact it would have on subsequent, subsequent phases. And I think out of fairness of the developers, because I did ask them that question, I told them to be prepared for that question, and I, I believe they are. So, I just draw, I bring that up because I know they were, that was brought up last night and I told them to be prepared.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If anyone from the developments side would like to come up to speak to that, I will invite you up under my time to, to, to talk to us about the impact of the potential for that, that reduction from a four to a three story, if you'd like.
So, I guess my first question is, is it three stories is the amendment, not 35 feet?
Correct. I'm responding to the specific comment from the town chairperson, so four to three.
Not exactly sure what height that would get us to, but if it's above 30 feet, that's fine. Is that what the amendment state or would be?
Yeah.
I'm really going to have to go back and push a pencil here to see if it's pencils out to make sense to move forward with the Phase One. And until I do that, I guess that's, it may or may not. I, at this moment, I'm not 100% certain of that because of the clubhouse amenities, how nice it's built, all those things, spreading that cost over 60 units versus 80. I don't know if it cash flows at that point. And we didn't get into this to, you know, throw money away. So, I don't know if you have anything else to add?
I'm sorry, I, I couldn't quite hear that last comment you made. It was kind of trailing up. What did you say?
I'm sorry, I, I just said, I, I just need to pencil it out and make, see if it cash flows at that point. We didn't, we didn't get into this to, obviously to throw money away. If, if it's going to lose money, I don't think anyone's going to, you know, any sensible developer probably wouldn't move forward, so. But I don't know that answer as of right now, so we will study that if it approves with the amendment. We came to the city of Oshkosh. We proposed this project to the city of Oshkosh. We have not asked for $1 of TIF. We have not asked for any grants. This is all on our dime. I watched other developments in the city of Oshkosh that have asked for TIF and got it. The reason we could justify the project that we had is because of a four-story. To justify the cost of those elevators, somebody made the comment last night, why don't you just eliminate the elevators? Well, I'm not walking up three stories with a bag of groceries without an elevator. Again, we did not ask anything from the city. We are putting this bill ourselves and we're spreading those costs. We need to spread those costs among a number of units. And we conceded the back line of that property to two, two-story townhomes. Those were originally drafted and drawn as four-story apartment buildings, but we let the shed of that building so it would help buffer the surrounding subdivisions, the two subdivisions, and it also helps buffer from the, the street noise of the highway behind us. And I, like Jake, I, I don't know, I'm really finding, I, I love numbers, so I love crunching numbers, but I did not pencil this out this way. And it's a thin deal to begin with.
Excuse me, just a minute. City manager, did you say you've had a conversation and asked them to be prepared for this?
Yeah. So there were, well, I, I mentioned it to him today, so after, based on the feedback from last night. So, but I think, you know, you, you mentioned the clubhouse to me and I think it, you've, Jake, but the cost of the clubhouse, you know, we've had another recent development where we talked about Phase One, Phase Two costs. This Phase One includes the clubhouse, which will benefit the entire development, but all the costs when they go to the bank have to be covered by that. And I, I would ask you to maybe explain that a little bit because that made sense to me because of our recent experience on these. Phase One costs oftentimes have common costs that have to go through the bank and, and it's your project, not mine. So, I don't, I, I understand the basics of it, but I don't know the details like you guys do. And I think, you know, that, that's what's making Phase One so expensive because they're doing a clubhouse for five, six subsequent phases.
Correct. So.
Yeah, not just correct, because I just, you know, but go into a little bit of the detail that, that you guys.
So, when we look at, to put this project together and we're basing that clubhouse up, two 40 units, two, total of 80 units, it really doesn't support itself, but we could justify it. We have good relationships with banks and we've had this conversation of having a shortfall initially because of the clubhouse, the expense of the clubhouse. And we're trying to spread those costs on 80 units when it should be spread across 500 units. The clubhouse makes financial sense on 500 units. It doesn't make sense on 80 units. But we also know that it's an attraction. When we go to lease one of these units, the first thing that they do is they walk into the office, which is in the clubhouse, and even before we show them an apartment, we've already got them sold on, on the project. So, the clubhouse is, is, is very important to us, but to spread those costs on 60 units versus 80, just awfully hard to do. Again, I don't have these numbers put together.
Would the cost affect if you opened it anywhere else, though?
It's not just the clubhouse as well. It's, it's a combination. It's.
Excuse me. We're not asking for comments back here. If you'd like to excuse yourself, you may. You may excuse yourself if you can't follow our decorum.
I'm trying to address more of the question here. The, it's the clubhouse, it's the land cost, it's the excavation, it's all these added costs and dividing it up. We have financing pulled right now for 80 units in the clubhouse. We're going to have to go back to a bank and explain why. Why is it not, what's going on here? Why are we going to reduce this? How is this going to cash flow? How is the performer going to be affected in this situation? Again, I, we need to pencil it out and I, I just, not happy about the curve ball, but I understand the concerns today. And I really think, as my brother Matt pointed out, this or this, from a mile and a, or from a half-mile away, is that really going to impact anyone's life other than ours? I really do not think so. And the other question I have is, would this, would this impact?
This gentleman back here, I don't know what your name is. We've asked you several times to stop.
The other question I had is, will that impact, will that set the precedent for every SIP here going forward, I guess? Does that mean Phase Two is three stories at a max? Or is that up for, you know, further debates or?
The amendment that was offered is strictly for, for item on the table.
For this, the SIP for Phase One. Okay, so we could have that discussion in future. Okay.
Do either councilmembers have any questions for the developers?
Can I make one, one more comment? What you're, we're asking you to do tonight is to vote on three buildings. I don't think anybody's had any pushback on the clubhouse. It's been the two 40 units, in the height of the two 40 units. The two 40 units that were in question sit on Lake Buttermore Drive. Those two buildings out of all the buildings are the farthest away from both subdivisions. If you allow us to build those first two buildings as four-story tall, it will at least give us a guideline when we come back for two, Phase Two, Phase Three, Phase Four, Phase Five, at least we can look at the distance and everybody can go out there and look to see what kind of impact that height has. These are two 40 units and it at least gets us started out of the gate. We can, we've got our funding put together and we can get to start of this next week. Thank you.
All right, we're going to call the roll on the amendment, please. Did you need that, like, repeated or clarified?
Let me make sure that I have it correct. I have to amend the two four-story buildings in Phase One to be limited to three-story buildings.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Muggerauer?
No.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
No.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
All right. We will give some time if folks want to.
You need to do the.
We have to vote on the action resolution.
Yes. I just wanted to give the opportunity, if anybody wanted to take their leave, they So, if we can, please call the roll on the item as amended.
Muggerauer? Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
No.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.
I'm not fine with that big, that close, everything lined up wrong. You're doing all. I had to go to the banks, you know.
All right, we're now at council discussion and direction to city manager and future agenda items. Future agenda item to discuss the process to fill council vacancy April 25th, 2023.
This was just to, you know, put the place marker out there and?
We do have somebody who signed up to speak on this item.
Oh, well, there you go.
Well, I didn't ask you, but.
Tammy Corteres?
Oh, no, she left.
Did she leave? Okay.
Okay.
So, this was really just a place marker if nor the reason to do a commercial, that we will have a vacancy come Tuesday when Deputy Mayor Muggerauer is sworn in as mayor. Following the council's policy that they adopted and codified several years ago, staff already initiated the process because we had the imminent departure of a council member. So, we've already started the process. The deadline is next Thursday, April 20th at 4:30 PM. I can tell you we've already had a few applicants and we'll be forwarding those to council to keep them aware of the process. That was something that I, I heard from councilmembers is to stay current with what the applicants were, the number of applicants, things like, I, I think we have three so far today, so we'll, we'll be forwarding those to you.
Excuse me, city manager, how can folks get an application?
Thank you. It is on our website. It is one of our hot topics and you can, you can contact the city manager's office either by email or it's right on the website. There's a hot topic, applicants sought for city council vacancy. It's right there. The application's there. You can fill it out and turn it in to the city clerk's office and the city clerk will, will compile those for the meeting on April 25th. So, that's why it's listed as a future agenda item. But the deadline's the 20th. All applicants are expected to make a presentation to the council. Again, that's part of the process that the council's developed and then we provided some information about how council has done it previously. The council can choose different processes, but I think it's worked pretty well and so you can take a look at that and if you're comfortable with that. But really, I'm only talking to a few. There it is on the, on the website, right there under hot topics and you can fill it out that way and the application's right there, easy to fill out. Like I said, we've already received three so far.
We promise it's not a blank page. There it is.
There it is, yeah. I just took a while to download. So, there's, there's the application, very similar to a boards and commissions application.
And we'll get the actual application, not just the names, correct?
We'll give you, yeah, you're going to get what you see there, just filled out. We've already received them, so we'll start feeding them to you. If you want the applications in advance, we can do that. That's not a problem.
I think, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think in our last round that we did, that piece didn't quite happen that way and it was, you know.
I can speak to that.
Yeah, so, I'm, I'm thinking that new council would probably appreciate having that.
Yeah, so that's what we'll be doing.
Yeah, and, yeah, I mean, it's really hard for five minutes to get seven people to, or six people to know you, what you're about. So, having some of that preliminary is huge. So, thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
All right. So, we are at council member announcements and statements and I'm going to exercise a little privilege here tonight being that this is my last full council meeting. Certainly appreciated and been honored to serve this community on the common council for seven years and I want to congratulate our incoming new council members, Carl Builo and Joe Stevenson, Paula Esslinger, and deputy mayor moving into the mayor's spot. Yeah, so appreciate this opportunity and all of the staff and time and experience and keeping me honest. So, appreciate it. That's all I have to say. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to take, take a few moments to, to acknowledge your service. Obviously, you've been a staple on this council for the last, remind me, seven years. Thank you for the reminder. And just want to say thank you for, for the service, you know. While we didn't always agree on every topic, I knew that in the end, you were trying to make Oshkosh a better place and that's all of our goal, right? That's, that's what we're all trying to do. Process isn't always the best or it doesn't always appear the best. We had one of those tonight, but in the end, it's about coming together for consensus and moving forward as a, as a unified team. And that's what I've appreciated about serving with you for the last five years for myself. So, on behalf of the council, just want to say thank you for your service to the city of Oshkosh. Since you won't be here next week, you've got legislative duties down, down in Madison. Wanted to present you this evening with your plaque that we give to, to all outgoing council members for your, our appreciation presented to Lori Palmary, given in grateful recognition of your outstanding service as an Oshkosh city council member from 2016 through 2023, serving as mayor from 2019 to 2023, as well as deputy mayor from 2018 to 2019. So, on behalf of the city council, just want to say thank you for your service and Godspeed and good, and good work down in Madison because your success is our success. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I should ask other council members if they have any other council member announcements or statements or reports on their boards and commissions.
Don't have any reports, but I want to acknowledge that councilmember Miller and Hanson as well. I know that we have one more of that weird meeting, right, where we reorganize, but appreciate you, all the work you've done here and you as well, Mayor, Mayor Palmary. I think as people see tonight, this is not easy.
But it's definitely been progressive and varied and civil. Most of the time, we've been able to come together and staff has put up with us, too. So, I'm grateful, grateful for the experience and for having met and served with all of you. All right. City manager, it's all yours.
Thank you. A few items in the agenda packet, some cooperative purchases, column lifts, that's for the parts department building and then two vehicles for, or excuse me, three vehicles, facilities maintenance division, engineering division, and actually two for the engineering division. And there's an update of outstanding issues and I'll be updating that for the, the new council as well. And you'll be getting, the councilmembers who are sticking around will be, I'll be providing you with a first quarter update of my, how progress towards my annual goals. You'll be getting that shortly. And I did give you a brief email today and given the fact that Deputy Mayor Muggerauer presented that plaque, I will tell you that was no easy task because I didn't know you weren't going to be here until really late. until really late. And my executive assistant, Diane Moran, made sure that we had it ready for today. So, you can thank Diane, and then you can also congratulate her. I think many councilmembers are aware. Jesse has accepted a position in our transportation department with that new management analyst position. So, she's going to work with Jim and Steve over in transportation. I think they'll be doing some great stuff over there. I think Jesse appreciates the addition to that budget over there probably more than anyone right now. But with that said, I have worked with Ms., I said Moran, I should have said Bartlett. So, I know Diane's watching at home. Ms. Bartlett, I'm going to be appointing her as our new city clerk. It will be effective May 1. Jesse and Diane will be doing multiple transitionings, Jesse into her new position and Diane into her new position. And of course, I will be left high and dry up here. So, please be patient, especially a new mayor in terms of, you know, getting things done. We'll get some things done, and we're working on a transition for the two new positions in transportation and the clerk's office, as well as in my office. So, congratulate Diane. We'll be doing an introduction on the 25th with all that. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, and thank you, Diane, if you're watching. All right, we will take a motion to adjourn.
So, move to second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.